All right. Hey, how's it going everyone? My name is Peter Allen and I'm with the core team of San Jose Arts Advocates. We are a organization here based in San Jose that focuses on advocacy, obviously, on behalf of arts and culture, education such as events like this to bring people together to learn more about how government and arts and culture intersect and how different idioms and different industries intersect and then also networking collaboration amongst artists and the artist community. And then we obviously also do a lot of support for individual artists and make sure we share as many opportunities as we can to help them advance their careers. We're excited tonight to welcome Councilmember Raul Peralas from District Three for a semi informal conversation around arts and culture in San Jose. But before we get started, I wanted to kick it over to one of my core team compadres Mighty Mike McGee to give a land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Councilmember Peralas for joining us today. We pause to acknowledge that we sit on the land of the Alone people who trace their ancestry through the local mission system. We remember their connection to this region and give thanks for the opportunity to live, work, learn, and pray on their traditional homeland. Let us take a moment of silence to pay respect to their elders and to all Alone people of the past and present.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mike. Okay, well, thank you for that. And with that, we're going to get into the meat of our conversation. We'll be here for a little less than an hour. Thank you again, Councilmember, for spending the time with us today. I know you're very busy with a lot of things going on in the city these days. If you wouldn't mind, if you want to give just a quick introduction of yourself to folks who may not know you or a lot about you and in terms of how you came to be on the council and some of your priorities since and anything you're working on right now that you're particularly excited about. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I was about to start talking with the mute on, but I remembered. Well, yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to have this more intimate conversation with all of you tonight. And I'll give a little brief introduction and happens to be just sort of timely as well for for me and I think and for you in regards to the conversation tonight. As I announced what my next endeavor will be, which will be running for for mayor and that that'll really start to ramp up later this year. The rate or the elections will be next year. But Peter mentioned, my name is Raul Peralas. I am the council representative right now for District Three, which is the downtown core in all the surrounding neighborhoods. I am on going on year seven here with the council. And I'm a lifelong resident of San Jose, grew up in West San Jose from the hardworking, middle-class, blue-collar family. My my dad immigrated here from Mexico and he grew up rather poor in in Albezo and met my mother in high school. They had my sister and I and both of them ended up leaving high school to raise the family. And I was the first to be able to go to college. I went to San Jose State and graduated with a degree in math. And the intent at that point was to be a teacher and I actually did substitute teach for over a decade. But I never went back to finish up with my my teaching credential to be a full-time teacher because as I got into the classroom, started being interested or taking up interest in other roles in our in our community and actually ended up being an emergency medical technician. And so I worked as an EMT for a couple of years. I actually worked at SAP Center. Back then it was HP Pavilion and in work Sharks Games and concerts. And and that's actually what led me to the next career that I got into, which was policing. I met a couple officers there. My boss there as an EMT encouraged me to actually take on a real career. She said, hey, you're substitute teaching and you're working as a part-time EMT. It's time to, you know, it's time to look for something a little more permanent. And so I ended up applying and got hired with the San Jose Police Department. And I served as an officer here for eight years and did not have any intent or original interest in running for office. I don't come from a politically connected or motivated family. My father actually never voted in his life because he wasn't a citizen. He became a citizen when I was first running for office and and voted for his first time that that year. He wasn't able to vote for me because my parents still live in West San Jose, but but he voted first first time that year in 2014. And and my mother voted every now and then in presidential elections. And as I graduated from high school, I also was engaged in more of the national politics from the presidential elections. And other than that, I didn't even know who my council member was. I was a police officer for a couple of years already. And lo and behold, the Great Recession hit. And and what I thought was, you know, a pretty secure job, we ended up getting police officers ended up getting our number, police officers ended up getting pink slips or notifications of being terminated. I missed that cut by a little bit, but I saw a lot of my friends get laid off. And and for me, it was just a big eye-opener in regards to what was happening nationally. But then ultimately, how it was impacting us locally and the fact that I knew really not much about the decisions that were being made. And and I know our union was was really, you know, playing a big role, but I wasn't really aware of that. And so it simply woke me up and I started to participate. I participated with my union, the San Jose Police Officers Association. I ended up joining a couple organizations, actually where I met Peter. I went to my first Silicon Valley Young Democrats meeting. And that's where I actually met my wife. And I still say today, she's the best thing to come out of all of this. And we have our son now, so maybe he's the best thing now. Our son Jorge was two and a half. And I it's still at that point in time, I wasn't necessarily, I don't think I had the the full intent that I would run for office. I was just getting more involved in our community in regards to knowing what was happening, knowing who my elected officials were, what those decisions they were making and then how I could, you know, participate. And and as I did, that, you know, that's when I started to develop more of an interest in and actually thinking about, could this be something I could do as well? And, you know, certainly was not something I had any experience in, or again, my family had any experience in. And when I decided to to take the the chance and run for office back in 2014, I was relatively unknown. I was a big underdog in that race and and not even out the gate, not even my own union, the POA supported me. That took a little bit for them to get on board, just simply because people just didn't think I was viable to to win an actual a race. And the Young Dams were the first organization to endorse me. They're actually now the first organization to endorse my mayoral race. And so they're being consistent here. And, you know, and I ended up winning that race and have now went on to to win my reelection. That one was a little easier. Nobody ran against me for the reelection and have now, as I said, served, I'm going on my seventh year here. And as a council member in the city of San Jose, right, we get the ability to make a decision on where all of your taxpayer dollars go, right, where your resources go, where the priorities are in the city, champion policies that have an effect right on our city for decades, if not in some cases, right, centuries to come. Projects that we get to approve, things like the new Google project, right, coming in, things that are going to really change the shape of of our city. And and as I have had a, you know, an opportunity to now be a part of that on the city council and recognized, I think, the the perception that I bring, the experiences and the values that I bring into being a policymaker and a leader for our city. And I think what we what we have is an opportunity move for our mayor is termed out as well, right? And so there there'll be a lot of people vying for, I think, the the role of mayor. But for me, that's that's the that's the next endeavor that I decided to to go down and I made that announcement yesterday. So look forward, as Peter was mentioning earlier, to maybe as as opportunities presented myself in the future, whether it's candidate forums or whatnot, to have those conversations with yourselves.
Excellent. Very, very good timing. Great timing on us, I think, to schedule this the day after that happened. So that's just that's just good. That's just kismet. Well, thanks very much, Councilmember. Real quick for everyone who's here. Thanks, Ron, for throwing some notes in the chat for housekeeping. We're gonna, we have some prepared questions that we're going to run through with with Raul tonight. We'll probably get through them all and I'm hoping we'll answer or we'll ask some questions that folks in the crowd might have in the peanut gallery, as it were. But if you all have any questions, feel free to drop them in the chat. You can also introduce yourself there if you want and say what organization you're with. And just so everyone is aware, we are recording this forum tonight and we're broadcasting live on Facebook. So this will be available out there for anyone to watch and to peruse later. If you're uncomfortable being on video, feel free to stay off video during during the the meeting, just in case you don't feel comfortable being out there. But we're going to get right into it because I want to make sure that we maximize our time with you tonight, Raul. So first question would be, what are your, what are any general thoughts you have about San Jose's arts and cultural life? And do you personally have any artistic outlets yourself or creative outlets?
Yeah, thank you. And I apologize. I didn't start off on my intro on myself this way, but thank you for, you know, yourselves on the work you're doing, right, with San Jose Arts Advocates and and I think really raising, you know, the voice of of arts in our community, as you know, arts and artists, I should say, as you know, this past year, right, has been tremendously impactful, detrimental to those in our in our arts community and our creative communities. And so, you know, I know that the work you can do, whether it's having conversations with elected officials like myself, people in in decision-making positions, or simply just being able to to continue to to further the the arts and the support for the arts in San Jose is really a tremendous opportunity. So I want to say thank you. And and along those lines, in regards to my thoughts for the arts and cultural life in San Jose, you know, I think when you when you date back a little bit of our our history, we were known right as being sort of a very pale city not too long ago, right? Where you couldn't find too too many murals. Ron's got a tremendous new one as his backdrop there, right? Where you couldn't find too many murals and and people claim to struggle to to really find, right, a vibrant art scene, arts and cultural scene. I think if you're like me and you you were born and raised here, I think the first alone festival I ever went to, I was maybe like seven or eight years old. One of my earliest friends was a Japanese-American, lived down the street from me. And so I was immersed in it, right, as a local. And I think as a local, you may have found yourself in a lot of the cultural events or or some of the art scene. But not being a local, it was, you know, difficult or has been difficult over the past to to come into San Jose and 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 really see it as a great arts and cultural hub. I think that has changed. That has began begun to change over the last good number of years and and you can see it. Actually, now it's more visible and it's visible to to non-locals, right, where you come into the city. And we now have tremendous murals that have just been, right, painted all throughout the city where a lot of them private, right, or nonprofit driven. But the city as well, the city's participated, right? We've we've beautified some of our underpasses over there on Santa Clara and Park, right? Using the arts to be able to do so. And and now it's 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 not such, I think, something that's strange to to people that are visiting or locals alike to see San Jose as an up-and-coming location where we really do value and and can see growth within arts and and culture here. And then the second part of the question, I I I don't have any creative or artistic talents. The closest one that I have is I enjoy singing. I'm not I'm not great at it. I don't know. I wouldn't even say I'm good at it. I enjoy it, like maybe a lot of people do, but I'm not embarrassed about singing publicly. So I I enjoy karaoke. And but I also just enjoy singing in general. My parents always sang in the car when we were going on long rides. You know, we grew up listening to to oldies. That was my parents' music of choice. I listen to anything nowadays and I love, I just kind of love singing. I sing to my son all the time. It it seems to work. He falls asleep and I sing to him. He's not, he does, he's not like crying or yelling. So but but that's about, that's about it. No, I can't play an instrument. I've been terrible at drawing and crafting. You know, my wife likes to make fun of me because I'm nothing of a handyman either, horticulture. I mean, you know, so I unfortunately, but what I am, and I think you all will appreciate this, I'm a consumer. We love, my wife and I both, we love, we love the arts, right? We love going to to concert shows, the events, the festivals that we have. So we love being a consumer of those that actually do have the artistic talents.
Well, as a as a frequent patron of a Monday Night Live at San Jose stage, I definitely know you're also, you have some acting talents. So I think you might need a little work on the comic timing a little bit, but I think you've you've got some some opportunity there as well. So well, it's great. And I know and I know that the OCA or the Office of Cultural Affairs is encouraging everyone in San Jose through the We Create Challenge this month, every day to to practice their own creativity. So go to @SanJoseCulture on social media and and check out that campaign if you can. I'm sure I'm sure you've seen that as well. So building off of that, it's it's great to hear sort of that that background and that sort of the value system you bring to it. What do you feel are is the role of the mayor and the council and the city, you know, city elected leaders in terms of establishing and and supporting the arts and cultural ecosystem in San Jose?
Yeah, that's a great question. And 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 obviously, I've been able to learn throughout the years now and being on the council, how I think we can implement better the arts community into decisions that we make that may not have, I think, been so obvious beforehand. One, and it's a big one, and I know that we we may discuss this a little further after, but it's in regards to the private percent for the arts. And this is policymaking, and that's the number one thing, right, that elected officials can do is create policies that then show or enhance our values. And in this sense, it's, you know, how do we actually get funding to to be able to enhance the arts in our city? And in a policy like the private percent for the arts is one of those ways we can do it. And as you all know, because you have been at that fight at that table with me over the years, this is something we've we've put forward, right, we've proposed and and it has not garnered support from the the full council or the mayor over the years. Fortunately, after a number of failed attempts, right, we were able to succeed in that. Unfortunately, the pandemic hit and everything got stopped, right? And so I think we'll dive a little bit maybe into that in one of the the latter questions. But outside of policymaking, which I think is is, you know, could make common sense as as we are policymakers, there's other things that we can do simply if you are viewing things with that creative lens or with that artistic lens. There's a lot that the city does. For instance, this is, I think, a a great example. We do a lot of graffiti cleanup. And we go out with gray or brown or white paint and we simply just, you know, slap it right over. And much like we have cyclical challenges with encampments and clearing encampments, we have cyclical troubles when we when we go out, we simply are, it's like an Etch A Sketch, you know, you're just clearing the screen so that that way somebody can come back out and and do graffiti right over it again. So it doesn't, it doesn't work. But you look at like the the mural, I think it's Sophie holding up the world behind Ron, right? That I can, you know, I would, I would bet, right, that it's not going to get graffitied for, you know, decades to come, right? And even if it did, first off, likely other graffiti artists would would, you know, be really offended, right? And likely, you know, there would be some some ramifications for it, or you're talking about real minor stuff, but nothing where you'd have this essentially a plain wall that gets graffiti and then we constantly paint over it and then it gets graffiti again. And we're and we're spending a lot of your dollars, tax dollars on that. I had this conversation with our city staff a couple of years ago where I said, hey, why do we not, why do we keep spending the money to go out there and just and paint over again and again? Why do we not actually fund a mural? Now it's going to cost a little more than just the gray or, you know, tan paint. But we may never have to go out there again, or at least not for a while. And and actually, it, you know, it was initially just a conversation we had with staff and they were open to it. And ultimately, the staff has sort of adopted that idea is, yeah, you know, let's let's try to pilot some places where we have repeated graffiti challenges. And and could we, instead of just slapping paint over it, could we then instead get some murals? But it's not a, it's not a standard practice for the city. That's something that's sort of, you know, we're having a push on, it's a pilot. I think things like that should be standard, right? We should be include when we're when we're having decisions, making decisions like this. If we were to have included the arts from the beginning, we may not be, you know, doing them at all the way that we're doing them today. And and so I think that there's many places where where, you know, we could do a better job.
Building off that, just getting away from the prepared questions just a little bit, but it is related. Something that Brendan Rossin from our core team has brought up before many times is the artist in residency concept. Do you have any thoughts on that as far as how that might be done at the city level? This is this would be like having an artist or creative, a creative embedded in different departments to help them think through things like that. What would you think of a policy like that?
Yeah, you know, I think obviously we have the Office of Cultural Affairs. It's it's a slightly different role right there. You can't, you can't equate them to an artist in residency. For one, they're not resourced enough to really, you know, plug in in all of the different decisions that the the city departments are making. And and so I think there there is a value in having that. I think there's also a value, you know, in having that in the mayor's office, right? The mayor has some flexibility with with staff, right? Our mayor, for instance, Sam Licardo, when he took office, created a new role, a new role in his office and essentially a new office, as he called it, an office of strategic partnership and innovation. But it started with two, two personnel, two, two people funded out of his office budget for the first couple of years. And then he suggested that we create a permanent office of innovation and strategic partnership under the city manager, so funded by the city ongoing. Similarly, you could do something like that for the arts. You could do something, even if it was organically grown through a mayor's office and not necessarily started off right in the city, but something that could then permeate through the city and it maybe even be the, you know, adopted as a formal role, as you're you're stating, Peter, something like an artist in residency.
That's a, that sounds like a very creative solution. We like creative solutions. Excellent. Okay, well, also building off of something you were you were addressing in your previous comment, one, we want to thank you very much for supporting the private percent for art policy during the the council's priority setting last year. That was, it's a fight that took a number of years for us just to get on the list. And as you mentioned with COVID hitting, that is really not just that policy, but many, many policies have been put on the quote-unquote back burner as we we focus on recovery and resilience. Do you think, and we've spoken about this with, you know, city staff, with OCA staff, with city manager even, do you feel like there's anything that can be done or do you have any ideas of what could be done to advance the policy, you know, even just incrementally as as we're, you know, dealing with, even as we're dealing with the COVID issues and the recovery? And we know it's obviously a funding issue primarily, but um, do you have any ideas about how where we could find that money or how we could move the policy along in the near term?
Yeah, I'll be frank, and I don't think there's much of hope for the coming year personally. And the reason why is because, as you just pointed out, we had a pretty robust discussion at the council in regards to what we would be prioritizing this coming year. And we actually looked at all of the priorities that were on the, you know, pre-pre-approved lists, real list of priorities. And and we all ultimately really only lifted up two to to say, let's add them into this coming year's work plan. On, I think, on a more positive note, the city staff didn't didn't actually like table all this where it's not like something is getting put away and it's not getting worked on at all. The idea is they have priorities. And so, hey, we got to work it, you know, and focus on these priorities. But that doesn't mean that there couldn't be thought, there couldn't be conversation, there couldn't be some work done on other prior priorities that have been more or less back backburnered, right? And so, but they are, you know, they're backburnered on 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 low, right? So they're literally, there's not much cooking there with with them. And I honestly don't have much optimism on this policy advancing in this coming year. For me, I think the strategy will be, how do we ensure next year, when we have our discussion, typically we have it somewhere between January and March, we'll have a priority setting discussion. When we have that discussion, it will be about ensuring that this does not stay on the back burner. And for those of you that followed this year, I actually did allocate one of my votes for that item again, as I have consistently done over the years. Now, it's, we're not in as bad of shape as you know, we were before, Peter. Before, it wasn't even on the list, right? We were sort of constantly just trying to get it on the list of priorities. That's a bad place to be because you're starting from scratch. We're actually in a better place now because it is a priority, right? It's just, quite frankly, if not for COVID, right, I think it would be being worked on today. So really, the only thing that set back the work on it is the fact that we, you know, we did enter this pandemic. And and it has been going on for over a year. And so we had to really look at where do we narrow our priorities in this coming year. But I would say there's, there's a lot of value, right? We know one of the challenges of COVID that is created is financial. Well, there's a lot of value in adding a percent for the arts when we know that our arts were impacted so severely. In my mind, that's what should give it value, right? Others may say, well, we should be working on things like homelessness or how do we do X, Y, and Z? I don't disagree with that, but I think there's also a strong argument that says, hey, we're, one other question we're going to talk about later, right, is budget as well as, you know, how do we get money? Well, this is a way to solve it where we're not having to dip into the general fund, right? And we can say, look, we still have projects moving forward, projects like Google, projects like with Jay Paul or at projects with West Bank. The the environment is ripe, I think, right, to be able to have a policy like this and then generate some ongoing future dollars that we don't have to tap into the general fund. We don't have to worry about is TOT up or down this year? And so for me, that's why I I still gave it a vote to try and and see if we couldn't keep it going. But but I recognized, right, the challenges. I mean, again, we 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 advanced only two items out of a laundry list of things. So it was a challenge.
Well, we'll, we'll look forward to working with you again to keep that on the on the priority list and also make it bring it to the top of the list soon as soon as possible. But and we're absolutely more than willing to be participants in any conversations around how to help craft it, ideas, feedback. And there's a lot of ideas out there, a lot of other cities, as you know, have adopted something like this already. And you made a great point that we have so much development coming to San Jose, it behooves us to to take advantage of that and to make sure that these companies and developers know that arts and culture are real viable investment for them to make in in the city that they want to put up shop in. So building off that, then, why don't we go talk about the the budget really quick, quickly, because we're in the middle of budget season. Looks like the city manager's first initial final, you know, budget document will be released next week, I think. And then, of course, council members get to submit their ideas. The mayor has already sort of put out there his his priorities and his his dream scenario. Do you, what are your priorities coming into the budget process at a high level? And then any thoughts on how we can improve or ensure that there are just as few cuts as possible to to arts and cultural funding?
Yeah, I'll start backwards in in regards to the arts and cultural funding. As you may have seen in the mayor's March budget message, he talked about utilizing some of the the federal funds. And at that point, it was very unknown, right, what what exactly that might look like. But he mentioned utilizing those funds to try and offset the loss that we've had in TOT. And and so that was in his message and that's expected to come back in the city manager's budget document on how he's going to interpret and include that right into the budget that he presents to the council. And so I certainly support that. I appreciate that the mayor put that in there. I think he also is aware of how how impacted our arts community has been. And and I think that would really give opportunities for organizations that want to start to reopen and and take advantage of the reopening of the economy this year. But if you turn around and the TOT fund is gone and we've got no arts and cultural grants available, then, you know, and it's going to, it's just another, you know, speed bump. And so I I very much support that and I'm hopeful that that we see some of that. We did now what we know, we know we're going to get around $125 million this year from the federal government and then another $125 million next year. And I think the the biggest challenge is that the mayor was was making mention as well of wanting to preserve around 80 million of that for potential future year uses because of looking at maybe budget deficits over the next five years. I am, I I I'm not as, I think, conservative or cautious as he is in that regard. I look at it as, you know, I don't think there's any worse times that we're going to be seeing than what we just have seen this past year and where we're at today. And so I look at us as we're sort of at the bottom. We need to start to rebuild. Now is the time, right, to to invest that money. That's why the federal government has given it to us. I made a a question to him. I said, hey, how married are you to preserving 80 million of those dollars? And he said he wasn't married, but he was engaged to it. For me, that's where I'm going to be looking to sort of tap into. So for instance, if the city manager comes back and the budget doesn't necessarily include trying to offset the loss of TOT funds, then in my mind, we've got 80 million that the mayor is not touching, right? We have, we have money or or fun, you know, the the one-time funds at least, right, that we can tap into. And then additionally, for me, I made an announcement as well yesterday and and Brendan was there as well because he he participated in our Greater Downtown Economic Recovery Task Force. And going back to the policy discussion, I was able to get one policy brought forward for this coming year that the full council supported it, which was in regards to taking that same model that we had last year in downtown and then expanding it citywide, preparing for our reopening, being and bringing, more importantly, bringing the small businesses, the community organizations, bringing our community to the table. So that way, it's not just the city saying, hey, this is what we think should be done, but we we do that collaboratively. I think it worked really well last year with our task force and we were able I think it worked really well last year with our task force and we were able to allocate a hundred thousand dollars that I would, that I would, uh, got awarded in the, in the budget last year. And so what I'm asking for this year is a million dollars because it's now a citywide, uh, effort. And, um, and we made that announcement yesterday because again, it's, it's something that, that has to be approved in the budget. So just the fact that it's my idea and I'm going to ask for it doesn't mean that it would happen. So, uh, we're trying to build enough momentum and pressure that it, you know, it, it makes the, the mayor, uh. Find it hard to say no. And so that's, that's one, uh, uh, major ask that I'll be making. Uh, I, I'll, I'll mention one other, which is in regards to, uh, our, our arts and culture, which is actually the. I don't know how many of you are aware, but there is, uh, a sculpture that was called Weaver's Gifts. And, uh, as it relates to, um, the, the recognition of the Aloney, uh, Native Americans that, that. Uh, we did in the beginning of this conversation, over by, uh, the Arena Green was a, uh, a. Art installation done in two thousand and one, uh, called Weaver's Gifts, and you can look it up on the city's website. But it actually sell, was celebrating the, uh, indigenous, uh, uh, Costa Noa and Aloney, uh, people. And, um, and that unfortunately, it was like a giant Weaver's basket and a couple of other, um, um. Uh, art installations and, uh, it got damaged over the course of this last year. Because we had, uh, a large homeless encampment that was living there and using it as a fire pit. Um, and, uh, and it's, it actually is gone now. It's, it's, it got demolished. And, um, and it's about, uh, I believe eighty thousand dollars to replace. Uh, it's an ass that I'm going to be making, uh, and, and have worked with Michael Ogilvy from, uh, uh, our, our city. To see if we couldn't even get in touch with the, the artist. I think that's a, a huge loss. We don't have very many art installations celebrating the Aloney Native, uh, Americans. Here in San Jose, there's only two actually, and this was one of them. So in my mind, um, worthwhile, uh, to, to be able to bring that back. That'll be something else I'll be asking for.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you for that. Um. Speaking of you got into a little bit into the reopening and what you've done with, um, your task, with, uh, the task force that you pulled together, um. Can you speak to anything specific that's come out of the, beyond what you've already discussed, that's come out of that group? Um, uh, as far as ideas for supporting the recovery of downtown economy of the city's economy. And then if you could, maybe weave in how, you know, uh, the creative community and arts and culture relate to that.
Yeah, we had a lot of great ideas coming out of that, that task force. Uh, marketing was a huge one, right? About how do we, how do we actually get, uh, positive marketing about, uh, the fact that it's safe? Right? And that we're, that we actually are conscious about, uh, you know, it being safe. All last year it was things about social distancing and. Um, you know, in, in, in having the proper P P E and stuff like that. Uh, now it's going to be a little different. It's about, uh, we really want to be able to, to get people, uh, to feel comfortable coming back out as we reopen. Um, to reinvest in, in, you know, the local businesses, uh, and, and be able to help, uh, lift up our economy again. Uh, things like the outdoor activation alfresco forever, uh, but not just saying, hey, let's not just make this valuable for the restaurants. Could we do, you know, uh, can we bring the arts into some of these, like what we've done down in sofa, right? Uh, with, uh, the, the South First, uh, First Fridays, right? And, and can you actually be able to incorporate, um, more of the broader community as we are, uh, reopening? Um, and, and then just simply grants, quite frankly, that was another thing that came out of it and that's where this million dollars, um. A lot of it may end up going is simply just can we get the money into the hands of, of, you know, organizations or businesses, uh, that need it? And they could help them, uh, you know, be able to recover themselves.
Excellent. Thank you for that. And, and I did, I was really glad to see, I think we were all really glad to see that there was a very strong creative community presence in that, in that group. Especially having Brendan there. We know that, we know that we were represented because, um, Brendan, by the way, it's Brendan's birthday, everybody. So, uh, we're, we'll sing a little later, but we'll get you to sing, council member, uh, since you enjoyed it so much. But, um, moving around, like, I want to make sure we get to some audience questions. Make sure you, um, if you have any, throw them in the chat or we'll have, we're a small enough group. We can have you unmute later and ask yourself, um. Like a lot of cities, um, speaking of the recovery, um, we're also not so much recovering, but we're really, I think, going through a collective, um. Reckoning, uh, at a national level, um, and around, uh, social tension in a lot of ways, um. Uh, obviously racial injustice, um, and so many other issues that are impacting us at a national level and they obviously reared their heads in San Jose. Um, in some ways, you know, folks, um, especially in San Jose are more civically engaged, right? We're seeing more people interested in, in voting and politics and policy and what's going on. But at the same time, other times it feels like we're kind of talking and yelling past each other, right? It's been said that arts have a really unique ability to build bonding and social capital. What are your thoughts on how we could build a more, with, with the arts or without, you know, um, but how can we build a more robust and healthy civic life in San Jose? And I guess does the arts have a role in that would be?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, the, the arts, uh, it, it organically always finds a natural role, um, in, in these tense. Uh, you know, I think conversations and confrontations at times. You look at what happened last year through a lot of the, um, the protests. And, uh, you know, some of the best way for people to actually get their message across and, and do so in a peaceful way. Um, was a lot of the murals and you look at the businesses around downtown and, uh, we had a lot of businesses that boarded up. Right? Well, some were just boarded up because of the pandemic, right? They weren't, they weren't open. Um, others started boarding up after the protests. And, uh, you know, we had a bunch of, 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 uh, kind of drab looking wood covering all the businesses. And then next thing you know, organically, a lot of artists started painting over them, painting murals. And then businesses started saying, hey, can you come do mine, right? Like, uh, can you, and then now it's led to, hey, can you do my windows? Can you do inside? Can you do, you know, and, and all of a sudden, uh, what started organically from protest and wanting to put up, um, you know. Messaging, um, has turned into something, uh, much broader. You look at, uh, the very large Black Lives Matter, uh, murals that have been painted all across the country on, uh, streets. And, and we have one right here, not too far from my house and, and, uh, where Brendan and Amanda live, um, right? And so I think organically it always, it, it's sort of, it, it comes into these discussions, these tense discussions on its own. Uh, but I would agree with, right? I think that the sentiment that, um, that as, as you had mentioned and, and we know, I think it was, uh. Who was it described? Uh, Robert, uh, uh, Putnam.
Putnam, yeah.
Yeah, described it as the most, uh, significant underutilized forum for rebuilding community in America. Uh, and I would agree with that because it happens organically on its own. So you see that it's, people are using that as a medium, as, as a, as a means. Of messaging, as a means of coping, um, but yet it's not, it's not done where we're actually using it from the city's end. Or from, you know, a, a more formal standpoint where we're, we're creating that space. It's still kind of just done organically. Um, which, you know, I mean, sometimes is where, uh, it works better, right? Um, within, within the creative culture rather than a structure. We learned this a little bit last year, right? We, we allowed for artists to, uh, put on, uh, display at the, um, uh, at the airport. Right? A number of, a number of artworks and, uh, and it was very unstructured, right? It was, there wasn't really, you know, too many parameters, but then all of a sudden, once we hit a controversy, right? Then parameters come into play, the city manager comes in, well, we don't want issues and then, you know, and then it makes a bigger issue. And so, um, I think, you know, at times, uh, that's where, you know, sometimes within the arts, the organic. May ultimately even be better, but, um, how we navigate that and utilize and ensure we're utilizing. The arts in our artistic and creative community through these tense times, uh, I think is, is truly important. Uh, I know the mayor. Uh, when the Black Lives Matter mural was getting painted, uh, well, me too, but, but the mayor, I know, uh, definitely was getting a lot of pressure. Uh, from, uh, a lot of, uh, more conservative and, and, and Trump supporters of the time last year, saying that they wanted to put up. You know, vote for Trump or MAGA, or, you know, and, and do, they were, they were sort of, they were going to counteract the Black Lives Matter mural on the street, uh, if we didn't take it down. And, uh, and we were able to make a decision that just kind of said, you know, I guess go for it, right? If you want to, if you want to paint that somewhere in the street, uh, and nobody ever did. And, and then the mayor worked with some advocates to get some banners up, put at city hall. I, you know, I thought it was a, a, a decent nod, uh, and show of support, but it wasn't very significant, right? I mean, um, and so there's where, you know, how do we do something, uh, within the city, uh, that maybe could actually be a little more significant? And include the arts and creative, uh, community, um, and so certainly, uh, I think a worthwhile, uh, discussion.
Well, I see the birthday boy's got his hand up, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to go to him for a question if you wanted to follow up on what we're talking about right now. Brendan, you want to jump in or Amanda, sorry?
I'm sorry.
That's him.
Uh, sorry there. Yeah, there is a question, um, not directly on this point, uh, Peter, so I don't want to jump ahead if, uh, uh, on, on I, any items.
No, go, go for it.
Go for it. Okay. Um, so it's kind of, maybe this is a kind of a cul- a culture with a small C type of question, um, Raul. I'm, I'm thinking, you know, for us folks all, you know, sort of work in arts realms and sort of how we intersect with the city, right? We're often always trying to push the envelope a little bit in different ways. You're trying to put on events in different ways or we're painting, you know, murals and different settings and. And, um, you know, always trying to help advance the city in a, as a vibrant space. And so one of the things just in a, in a broad stroke sort of thing, we often intersect with the city on is, you know, you hear from city folks. Say, you know, referencing this idea of, uh, city governance by city attorney, uh, sort of idea that, you know, that. Things that the city of San Jose, um, just the sort of the more the organizational culture of the city of San Jose, uh, you know, city government. Uh, being, you know, I don't want to say risk, risk averse isn't really the right term, but just that it's, it's hard to move things forward. And that it feels like nothing's, it, you're able to make, um, you know, creative new strategies put into play. Because it gets ground, grinded down by this, you know, this idea of, of, um, you know, the, the. City Attorney's Office, I don't mean that specifically, but it's more of a, a organizational culture thing. So I'm just thinking about how as you look towards, you know, running for mayor and thinking about, you know, how you want to lead, lead the city, that, you know, this, does that? Issue, do you think that, does that hold any water first of all? And, and then do you, do you have any, any thoughts on, on how we? You know, make the city more inclined to finding ways to get some of these things done?
Yeah, um, and, and there is a lot of truth to that, right? Uh, the city gets sued a lot. Um, so, um, and I didn't know how often the city got sued until I got into council. But we spend almost every close session Tuesday, talking about different lawsuits where the city is getting sued. Um, and so I think that the, the city attorney's office, right? In trying to just do their job and, and, uh, be risk averse, right? And, and look at that, they are very conservative, right? And they try to be conservative to ensure that, uh, we're not out there having to dish out a lot of taxpayers' money. Um, in that same sense, uh, right, I think there, there has to be a balance, right? And you can't necessarily live, um, your life and I don't think you can govern where you're so risk averse, you don't do anything. You don't, you don't take any risk whatsoever, meaning, and then you don't advance, you don't change, you're not, you know, and, and quite frankly. Um, right? I think that there's, there's a lot of opportunities where we have that, um, we've had some challenges. For instance, uh, an example like the alfresco stuff, my office has been trying to close down San Pedro Street for about four years now. And we did a pilot after, uh, when the Super Bowl came, uh, we got it piloted two years ago over the summer to do a couple of weekends in a row. Friday, Saturday, Sunday of closures, right? Um, and one of the major challenges was just, um, the, the risk, for instance, that, um, our, our fire department was talking about. And what they would take, well, what if a fire happens and how do we get down into the area? And, um, and, and so there's a lot of, of, you know, I think challenges, but in my mind, right? We need to be able to, to take some risk. And when you think about it, this past year, we've essentially have San Pedro closed down almost the whole year now, right? Um, and it's worked and everybody's liked it. And, you know, and, and you, and, and in my mind, you got to find ways to make that stuff work that your community wants. That in this case, now the business owners want, how do we, right, find a way to make that, uh, possible and avoid some of the challenges? Uh, you know, that, that are there, our police department, they're concerned about, uh, what about the person that drives down, uh, the middle of the street there? When everybody's outside, uh, so you've got the fire department wanting it to be permeable so they can get in. You got the police department wanting it to be a, you know, a steel barrier so that nobody can get in. So there's this competing interest as well. And so I think that, you know, indeed, uh, it, it is not just the city attorney. I, I would agree with you. Indeed, uh, it, it is just at times. Um, you know, just the, the agency, the organization itself, um, that can be pretty risk averse. Um, and, and I do think we have to be willing to take, um, you know, take a little risk in, in that regard. Um, and, in order to, to really achieve, uh, something better or something different.
What, what can you do following up on that? What can you do as a council member or as even as mayor, um, to, to try to counteract that? Or, or, you know, push, help us push the envelope in, in, in that way, um, in your role?
Yeah, well, you know, obviously as a mayor, you have a little bit more leverage. You have a little bit more leverage over, uh, the budget. Um, and over policy, um, and, and just over staff, right? Influence. Um, uh, you have a decent amount as a council member as well, but at the end of the day, still within the council, it's, you know, it's a majority rule. And, and so that's where I think, uh, the challenges really lie, which is, it's in, it's in creating, uh, a more of a collaborative effort. To where if you can get people to buy in on taking, say, in this regard, taking risk, uh, with you. Um, and you can get a majority of support, not only from, uh, staff, but more importantly, from our council colleagues, the decision makers, uh, then we can get more done. I do think that's one of the major differences that, you know, um, not to politicize too much, but that, that, uh, that I'll be able to bring. Is, is, is in being, uh, sort of a bridge builder on, on the council. Um, we've had a lot of contention, right, over the years and, uh, there's been a lot of divide. Uh, and I do think that, that in order to get some of these challenging things done, uh, it takes a little bit more collaborative spirit.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Um, and Mike, Mighty Mike, he actually in the chat, wanted to point out, uh, S J S U was once, and as I say, it was once a. Car-friendly campus, I mean, with open streets and it has been for the most part shut down now, so it is, it is possible, um, in somewhere. Even though there were a lot of partners in that one too. So I want to get to, um, uh, other questions from the audience if they have them, but we have a couple more here for you. And speaking to that and to what you were just talking about with, um, San Pedro Street specifically, but more in a general sense. There's a lot of talk around both opposite cultural affairs and just in general in the city and opposite economic development and city planners, right? About building, uh, uh, placemaking and building stronger experiences of place and identity for all of the incredibly diverse neighborhoods in the city. Do you have any thoughts on how we can do a better job or do more of that and play like placemaking and, um. Uh, and creating that sense of identity for San Jose, for a city that kind of, for some people at least lacks a cohesive identity.
Yeah, I think this is where, uh, that concept, um, as you said, like a, some sort of artist and residency can really, you know, uh, be a huge benefit. And, and we can be picky and choosy about where, right? For instance, if, you know, you can't have someone everywhere. Do you have someone within the parks department or do you have somebody within the planning department, right? And that way, you're always, you're always bringing that perspective, uh, and I would say it should be a local art, artist perspective, right? Uh, and not just in general, an artist perspective. Um, uh, and, and I think we saw that example, there's another place where you can have the artist and residence here, maybe even a, a different type of role. I've been working on maybe like a board seat and that's with Team San Jose, right? And Team San Jose, we've gotten to, to the similar little hot water where it's, you know, hey, as we're marketing San Jose. Um, are we utilizing, what, what voices are we utilizing, right, in doing so? Or what, who are we displaying? Um, and, uh, Team San Jose, uh, as an organization, right, doesn't necessarily have, uh, a specific. Um, you know, a, a space or a board seat, uh, and, and, and at the time, they didn't even have a, a staff member that was necessarily local. And so, uh, they were just, you know, they're doing their jobs wearing a marketing hat, right? Or wearing whatever hat they might have worn, but it wasn't necessarily incorporating as well a local artist's hat or a local artist's perspective. And so I, I don't, you know, I don't think there was any offense there that they were attempting to do. It was simply just, I'm out there doing my job, trying to market San Jose and do my best here and there. Um, and then when, when some of our local art community saw it, um, right, there was a lot of offense taken because they're like, wait a second. What, where was, you know, where was our voice? Um, and I, I think, and, and since then, right, I've had conversations with the board and we've talked about things like, do you create a board seat for someone? Do you create an advisory body similar to this idea of, of a artist and residency, how do you ensure that those voices are included? In some of these important places and I, and I do think there, there are some priority places, places like Team San Jose, because they are our destination in marketing, you know. Body for the city of San Jose, places like, uh, our parks department, um, right? Uh, or our planning department that is looking at, you know, all of these projects that are going to get approved and how are you building out the sidewalk in the street? And, and, you know, those are good places to have somebody, um, uh, with, wearing that artistic hat.
Absolutely. Hey, fantastic. Thank you for, uh, bringing that back into that policy. Um, so last question, we can start wrapping up, uh, with the prepared questions. Arts education is something that's incredibly important to San Jose arts advocates. Um, it's one of our key, uh, uh, policy, uh, areas and advocacy areas. We understand, obviously the city's not directly involved in the school system, um, the state and the school districts are predominantly responsible for, you know, funding and programs, um, within the schools. But the city can, as we know, and it has been playing an important role in ensuring high quality education for children, particularly through a lot of library programs, right? Like, uh, S J Aspires and S J Access and S J, just about anything you can think of. And numerous studies, uh, including some by the Harvard Graduate. Um, and numerous studies, uh, including some by the Harvard Graduate School of Education, have established significant causal links between arts education and achievement in non arts academic areas, right? Um, what opportunities do you see for the city to support equal access to arts education resources for our students? Um, either through programs that already exist or think any ideas that you might have around that that subject?
Yeah, I I, you know, I, well, I guess if you ask Mayor Licardo, he would say, no, the city plays a big role in in education, uh, right? And and can influence uh it. So although I haven't uh seen him advocate on our schools for, hey, uh, you should be improving your after school or your in in school uh arts programs, um, but I think that, you know, essentially, and a mayor could uh insert themselves into conversations around uh what components of our schools are important. I don't necessarily think that would be the best uh role, though, for for um for a mayor. I do think a mayor could be looking at things, as you point out, well, where is it that in our purview? Um, you know, we could do some things like with our after school programs. We have community centers that are running, um, you know, preschool or daycare programs. Um, how do we ensure that the city is setting the example that says, hey, that, you know, the arts is gonna be an important component of these? It's not just gonna be, um, you know, uh, the math or science, um, or or reading and literature. But then we're also gonna ensure that we're including arts in in our local programs. Um, and I'm not totally against, right, a mayor or a city, any elected official advocating for things that maybe are outside of their realm. Uh, but I do think that, right, that that, you know, a focus should be on on things that are uh within our purview.
And I know that Ron Maria from our team would certainly add that uh at this at a state level, at least, arts education is, you know, mandatory or it's mandated to all the districts to to have some form of arts education in the schools. Um, obviously, the funding is not as robust as we would like it to be, but they are mandated to do it. And oftentimes, uh, you find school districts um just simply not fulfilling their end of the bargain. Um, so um, there might. So I think you're right, there is a role in terms of um trying to put some exert some influence, but um, you know, very good point that there are other opportunities out there for the city to have an impact in that area.
And in and in trying to set a good example personally, uh, for instance, our son, the only class he's ever done is in an arts class. It's the baile y canto over at uh School of Arts and Culture. And for us, it's tremendous because it's in Spanish, right? And he's learning Spanish songs and he's able to uh play with different instruments and, right, learning to sing and dance. And when he first did it, I mean, he could barely walk. Um, you know, I think we we started him off there a year ago, so he was, uh, you know, uh, just a little over a year. And and he literally was barely able to walk. Um, but he's been doing it for over a year now, and he had to do it by Zoom, just like everybody else this past year. Uh, and it actually went all right, right? It went well. Um, and uh, you know, but that those, you know, those are, uh, those are sort of enrichment or 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 programs that you have to sign up for, right? And not everybody gets an opportunity to do that. Um, and so it shouldn't be that it's only exclusive to, hey, can you sign up your kid for an after school program that you take them to and you're paying for? Uh, right? It's great if you have the means like my wife and I, and we should be doing that, and we're supporting an organization, right, by by paying for him doing that. But you shouldn't be left out of that opportunity because you can't pay for it or because your parents can't take you. We should have those opportunities as well made available to to all of our kids.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Um, well, I'm not seeing any, uh, I don't see too many questions in the chat, but if anyone has a question, feel free to raise your hand as well, and I will uh certainly go to you. Um, but uh, since we have a moment, I know we have you for a couple more minutes, if it's okay. Um, I would, I wonder if you wouldn't mind flexing your singing muscles and singing Brendan Happy Birthday for us.
Sure, I'd love to do a happy birthday for.
Are you leaving us? So why don't you take it away?
I was messaging him earlier today. I I told him, what are you about seventy? So um.
Are we gonna sing together?
Yeah. Everybody, it'll be a really nice sound.
How the hell did this happen?
Okay, so go for it, council member.
I'll I'll kick it off. All right, Brendan, ready?
Here we go.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Brendan. Happy birthday to you.
Oh, very well done. Very well done. Good job, everyone. Happy birthday, Brendan.
They don't do musicals on Zoom. Thank you, Charlie.
I feel that next Monday night live visit coming soon. Um, we actually have a question. I'm seeing you raising from, uh, is it Leah? Leah, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you can.
Yes, yeah, Leah, Leah.
Leah, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, well, I, as a digital artist, as a Photoshop artist, who just happens to be raised in San Jose, where Adobe is based, um. I wonder, I I'm pretty new to this whole area and understanding how San Jose um relates to its arts and its arts program and everything like that. So I'm wondering if um if there's an ever been any initiatives in the realm of digital art and having Adobe partner with the city in any way. Or if there's any um, you know, possibilities in that direction.
Yeah, uh, I would say that the Adobe has partnered, for instance, they uh were helping as a partner and a sponsor over at MAKLA. Um, doing some digital arts there, doing musical recordings, um, right, mixing and stuff, and and they would provide equipment and whatnot. Uh, that was more of a private uh and and uh partnership with 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 MAKLA as a nonprofit. The city hasn't really done, uh, you know, not that comes to the top of my mind, uh, a a partnership um with uh with Adobe outside of that, outside of a connection with some of our nonprofits. Um, and so I I would say that I'm currently working with Adobe simply to try to get them to make their new bridge that they're building between their new their new tower, and it's gonna connect to their other towers. I'm trying to get them to make their bridge as uh as uh, I think, exciting as their company. Uh, they they wanna build a a pretty plain bridge, and I'm telling them, I'm like, you're Adobe.
Right.
You know, make it exciting. Um, and uh, but but other than that, no, they're having, uh, not that, not that I'm aware of, um, personally.
Okay, hmm, that's surprising. All right. Well, thank you.
It's on the radar now.
I I would agree with you, right? Adobe is headquartered in here in San Jose, right? And and I just don't think that that, you know, opportunities like that have presented themselves, and it could be along those lines of, you know, not necessarily having the the right people like an artist and residency residency, right, in it within the city. Um, I will say, and I'll make this uh public here, um, it is uh the goal of mine to use the strategy that I mentioned to you all, which would be to create a a role for, and I don't know if I'll call it artist and residency, but base essentially to create a a uh a position within my mayoral staff, should I get elected, uh, for someone that actually wears that hat. Um, and uh, it much like what our current mayor did with creating, you know, these new positions of Office of Innovation and Strategic Partnership, I I won't personally carry that on. I I won't have those roles in my office. I don't necessarily see uh the value of the mayor having that role, at least not today. I think he had some success with it, but that's not something I will carry into my office, which gives me flexibility on what what will I have in my office? And uh, and you have a commitment from me, um, that that's something that I I want to have um included, at least within the mayor's office. And I do hope that that could build into something where, um, you know, it it becomes more citywide. But but personally, it could be where um this discussion, right, has a place to go, where it's all right, how do we actually go beyond this conversation and actually say, do we reach out to Adobe? And do we create something with, you know, the new mayor's office? Um, and how do you take advantage of the fact that they're headquartered here? And um, you know, something we may not have ever done before. And and again, I'm aware, I'm not the person to do that, for one. I'm not, again, as you all know, I I I'm not very creative and and artistically talented. Uh, but that's why you you should be surrounding yourself, right, within your team of those people that can can uh make you that much stronger. This is a place that I think we have lacked in the city of San Jose, um, you know, for for decades, if not for our entire, you know, city's uh government history. Um, and so uh I think it would be an important part to to make sure that it's within the next mayor's office.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, and thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Council member, if you can stick around just one more minute, I see Victor has his hand up, and I would love to have him ask a question. Victor, jump on in.
Yeah. Hi, Raul. Thank you for spending the hour more with us. You answered really all my questions, but uh I'm probably on the opposite spectrum of Leah, so I'm native to San Jose also fifty six years, and I've seen it go through. You know, Mayor Hammer, Mayor McHenry, Ron Gonzalez, and I I I think they were not as representative of the area. Even, you know, obviously, obviously then, so um I could probably go on and on about that, but just wanna ask, what what do you think the makeup of your team or your proposed team, hopefully your mayor, needs to be, obviously diverse and people of color and things like that? You have a solid background, it sounds like, and uh, you know, what what should we or what could we envision your your team to be like? And how would you populate your team?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I I just, I saw Joe put it in the in the comments, uh, but Joe, uh, Joe was mentioning that Doby has also worked with the tech and uh work San Jose. So thank you, Joe. I, you know, I, that's what I said. I think there's some partnerships that have been out there, but not with specifically the city of San Jose. So but I know they've been a good partner. Maybe we just need to bring them into a better partner with the the city, actually. Um, so certainly, right, I think um in in building out my office, uh, one of the biggest things, again, is is kind of building on the strikes that I don't have. Uh, so I will be looking for that. Uh, but I I will also, much like I have today, uh, ensure that I have um office staff and a team that represents the diversity of our city. I I am proud that right now I'm the only council member on the eighteenth floor that has two uh Vietnamese speakers. And in fact, there are some offices uh that don't have any. Uh, we have, we have one office that represents the largest Vietnamese populated uh neighborhoods. And they don't have any Vietnamese speakers, and at times they're leaning on my staff for for uh support. And uh I made, you know, I wanted to make certain of it as I was building out my team, that I tried to make it a diverse team that reflected the local community. Um, and not necessarily people that were just somehow politically connected or motivated, but it was it was people um that really, you know, uh, had a love for this city, uh, because that's what we're we're servants, right? We're public servants, whether you're the elected official or you're the staff, like Patricia on my team is here tonight with me, right? She's spending her time. She's a public servant as well. Um, it's important that I have people that truly care for the city, uh, that wanna be able to invest that time and energy. Uh, but then also, right, that 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 my team reflects um the the city itself as well.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Victor, for the question. We had one more question that came through on Facebook, actually, from Samita Guard, who's on on our uh Arts Commission. She really thanks you for the uh response on arts education. She wonders, is there anything um that can be done to provide through the city to provide funding for art teachers who were made unemployed after the arts were taken out of schools and also during COVID, obviously. Um, foundation support and others have dried up that, you know, used to, like, I know some school connected organizations like PTAs will support an arts teacher at their school sometimes, but maybe those monies have dried up to some extent. Um, is there anything that the city government can do in terms of direct support, financial support to, you know, to arts teachers or for arts educators out there?
Only in the form of uh particular contexts like uh like rental support, right? We have, we have some forms of support that the city has put together um for private individuals, but it's really, it falls into a cat. It's not just general support. It's not, hey, I lost my job. I, you know, I I could use support. Um, it is really, hey, I lost my job. I can't pay my rent anymore. Can you go? You know, we have programs where they can come and apply for rental support in the city. Uh, we've we've raised private dollars for that. We have uh public dollars now, and we were partnered with the state on some of the federal dollars where. Um, so again, it's very specific, though, um, not not in general, just um, you know, support for individuals like that that may have lost their job. Um, so unfortunately, no.
Great. Well, thank you for that. Um, and thank you again for staying a little over. We're we're getting to be at six forty here, so I wanna respect everyone's time. Um, but uh, on behalf of San Jose Arts Advocates, I wanna thank you, Raul, for being here with us tonight, for answering our questions. I'm sure uh that's shared by everyone else on the Zoom here tonight, and like I said, we're recording and we're broadcasting on Facebook, so this will be out there for folks to to take a look at. Um, and just really wanna thank you, one, for your support um of uh some of our policy priorities in the past and hopefully in the future. Um, and if it's anything you'd like to ask us or anything you could, we can do, um, you know, uh, as far as uh being better advocates for your office or in the future.
Yeah, I I will certainly uh reach out and ensure, you know, thank you again for the advocacy that you're providing. Um, and as we begin to endeavor down these next efforts, uh, I thank you, Brendan, right, for continuing to work with us through the task force, uh, which is gonna be ongoing, right? And so uh we won't hesitate to uh to be able to reach out, so thank you.
Excellent. All right, council member. Well, we'll let you go and have yourself a great rest of your night. Thank you for singing to Brendan impromptu and showing off your creative skills. And uh, yeah, best of luck with everything uh that you're up to.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. You, too. All right, everyone. Well, thank you all for attending tonight's conversation. Really appreciate all the questions. Um, and for the arts advocates, folks, we can debrief um at another time and place. Um, if you have anything urgent, just text me. Um, but I'll shut down the the broadcast now so people on Facebook can stop butting into our private lives.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Thanks, Joe.
Especially all tell the new faces. Thank you so much this for coming and uh make sure you sign up on our website for our newsletter.
Good job, Hannah.
Good to see you guys. Thanks.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Joe. Great. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Leah.
Bye.
Bye.